Okay, we're at 11:02. Wanted to thank everyone who's participating in this call. I am going to turn it over to Chris Whitmore, who is one of our moderators. I am also a co-host and a moderator that will be here to help us through this question and answer session, really to answer your questions from the public about COVID-19. So at this point in time, I'm going to turn it over to my co-host, Chris Whitmore.
All right. Thank you, Michelle, and good morning, everyone. Again, my name is Christopher Whitmore. I'm the Chief of Staff for Richmond Mayor Tom Butt. And as Michelle Mylum just mentioned, I'm a co-moderator for this call. So glad to be with you all today. I'd like to start off by reminding our attendees that this town hall is to update you on the city of Richmond's response to COVID-19. And as Michelle just mentioned, the real purpose of this call is to answer many of your questions and share important information with you. Today, you'll hear from Richmond Mayor Tom Butt and City Manager Laura Snyderman with Police Chief Bisa French, Fire Chief Adrian Shepherd, and Emergency Services Manager Genevieve Pastor Cohen, present to help answer questions. Now, as you can imagine, we have many community members currently on the call and more community members who will be tuning in in just a minute, and we are so glad that all of you could join us today. Because we have so many people on the call, we will have to leave our attendees in listen-only mode, but please know that this is indeed an opportunity for us to engage with you and answer all of the questions that you submitted to us. If you did submit a question to us prior to yesterday's noon deadline, a moderator, either me or Michelle Mylum, will read your question to the panel during the Q and A session, which will take place after remarks from the mayor and the city manager. If you think of a question while you listen to the panel, you are welcome to submit that question in the nifty Q and A section of this Zoom platform, which should appear at the bottom of your screen. And finally, please know that while we will get to as many questions as we can, we cannot guarantee that everyone's question will be read during this town hall. And with that, I'm pleased to introduce Mayor Tom Butt, who will provide his remarks.
Thank you, Chris, and good morning, everyone. I'll start by thanking the organizers of this call, Crime Prevention Manager Michelle Mylum, Mayor's Office staff, IT staff, and leaders of the Emergency Operations Center. I'll also be the first on this call to thank first responders, healthcare workers, and other frontline staff for the critical work they're doing to get us through this pandemic. Last but not least, I want to thank you, the public, for joining us today and doing your part to flatten the curve. By staying home and social distancing when you go out for essential needs, you're all playing an important role in slowing the spread of COVID-19 in Richmond and the Bay Area. Let's keep it up. During this pandemic, the mayor's office has received a huge number of inquiries, and we've done our best to answer questions, distribute information, and put people in touch with the appropriate department or non-city agency. The mayor and the city council continue to be responsible for policy and legislation, and we have most recently enacted temporary relief for Richmond's renters. Our most daunting task in the next two months will be crafting a budget based on substantial reductions in revenue. Richmond is a council manager form of government, and our city manager, Laura Snyderman, is Richmond's executive manager. She is responsible for our Emergency Operations Center, which is leading Richmond's response to COVID-19. The mayor's office has been involved in the creation of a Richmond Response Fund, an initiative you'll learn more about in the coming days, led by the city manager's office, Ed Fong West, RISE, and several other nonprofit organizations. I'm proud to support initiatives like the Richmond Response Fund that will directly benefit those in greatest need, and I thank the many organizations and businesses that have stepped up for the community. During World War II, we can do it. Spirit-captivated Richmond, as our residents made some of the country's most significant contributions to victory. Though this is a different kind of global conflict, the "we can do it" spirit remains the same, and we can come out of this pandemic victorious by continuing to work together and doing our part to slow the spread of COVID-19. Now, I'm pleased to introduce Richmond City Manager Laura Snyderman, who will provide an update on the Emergency Operations Center.
Great. Well, thank you, Mayor, and good morning to everybody. I want to thank the mayor and the city council for all the support that they are providing in this very unexpected and really surreal time. And I also really want to thank our city staff. They are just doing an amazing job, still doing a lot of hard work, providing essential services, and really having to adapt and adjust, just as everyone else is. So they're doing a great job continuing to provide services. So in terms of an overview, remember that, just like every other city, it is the Contra Costa Health Agency and the health officer who are setting all of the rules and determining orders about shelter in place, business closures, social distancing. All that type of information is coming directly from the county, and we are doing our part to support that. They have the authority to set the pace for how we can recover in the future, too. So the bulk of the resources and recovery services are at the county, state, and even the federal level, but we are working closely and coordinating and collaborating with them so we can reach our mutual goal of protecting and supporting Richmond. Our Emergency Operations Center, we refer to it as the EOC, has been activated for the last several weeks. And what this is, is the Command Center for an emergency exactly like this. It's something we have had in place for a number of years. It's similar to what is done in cities, counties, and states across the nation, and it helps us bring all of our managers together from all of the different city operations so we can coordinate our response and allocate resources in a strategic way for the benefit of the community. In terms of impacts and some of the logistical sides, logistical parts of our services, we are having, all of our essential services are fully operational. So you've seen all of our sworn officers are still on the street. Our fire department is fully functioning. Our public works crews are doing a great job, continuing to keep us clean and safe and repair our streets and work on our parks and keep the weeds down. Most other offices, though, are closed. City Hall offices are closed. Some of the public counters, even the public counter at the police department, are closed, and a lot of folks are working remotely, so there are some delays in some services. Libraries and community centers are also closed to keep us safe at this time. Things that we have been working on recently have been including our webpage. One of the important things in an instance like this is to make sure we're really communicating with everybody as much as possible, and the primary way to do that right now is keeping our webpage really updated and making sure that we also refer you to the county and federal sites that have additional information and resources. There are a myriad of government entities that came together to prepare an alternative care site at the Crane Way Pavilion. So this is an area where if we do have a surge that the hospitals can't manage for COVID patients, here in Richmond, we've repurposed a wartime facility to fight this war on the virus. So that is ready if we need it. We've also helped organize, in conjunction with the county, a donations collection site. This is to be able to have the personal protective equipment and other supplies be donated to support our healthcare professionals. We're also working with the mayor's office on the development of the Richmond Rapid Response Fund, as he mentioned, and that will be a way soon so that others can donate to help in this situation. We also really have done a lot of education and enforcement related to maintaining social distancing and doing, again, our part to help make sure that we have as few cases as possible and are complying with that county health order. So we have a number of different people who are helping educate businesses and community members as necessary. We've coordinated with the county so that our police and fire response vehicles can also be decontaminated periodically. A lot of our departments who are still working have changed a number of operating procedures so that they can maintain the safety of their staff in terms of how the police and public works and fire departments function on a day-to-day basis. And we're also now starting to think about and try and develop specific plans on how we reopen things. The specifics of that are going to be dependent on the orders that we receive from the county, but we're really trying to think about how we can do that in a very thoughtful way as soon as we are allowed to. And in terms of that plan, one of the significant components and the significant impacts is going to be on the city's financial resources. As individuals are suffering economically in this crisis, so are cities. We are still gathering data. We're going to be able to start presenting some information as soon as next week and over the following couple of weeks, but our current fiscal year budget, as well as our next fiscal year budget, are going to be significantly impacted due to all of the closures. And while we don't know exactly how this is going to continue to involve and adapt over time, we definitely are committed to continuing to provide these essential services, no matter how long this takes and no matter the different changes that we have to adapt to over the next few months. And lastly, I started out by thanking the city council and our staff. I also want to really thank all of the local community partners that we've been able to work with. Our local health providers, our community clinics, community-based organization churches, our school district, neighborhood groups, and all of the Richmond residents have really come together to help in these challenging times, and it really demonstrates what a close community we have here. We're really fortunate to have that in Richmond, and it really speaks a lot to Richmond's resiliency going forward. So with that, I will turn it back over to the moderators so we can answer some questions.
Thank you very much, City Manager, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your remarks. Now, for the Q and A portion, Michelle Mylum and I will take turns reading the questions to the panelists, and I have the first question that I will read. This comes from Claire, Michelle, sorry, Claire Elizabeth de Sofia. Claire Elizabeth says, "When is the second wave supposed to hit here?" Second wave, of course, COVID-19. "And any estimate when the shelter in place order will be lifted?" And this question will go to our city manager, Laura Snyderman.
Sure. So the current order, as we all know, goes through May the 3rd. We are expecting that prior to May the 3rd, the county health officer will be revising that order. In what way that order is revised, we don't know. What I'm heartened about is that the county health officer, both here in Contra Costa County and in close coordination with five other counties and the city of Berkeley, are really looking at the data to make informed decisions. And as they get all of that data, they will be talking about how to modify the current order, as well as when they think there might be another wave or a surge. So there is still some anticipation that a surge, which means an increase in the number of patients, could happen over the next week or two, so certainly nothing is going to change over the next couple of weeks. And as you heard in the media, I don't have any additional insights, but as you've heard in the media, there is concern about how fast we open. We don't want to open and start large-scale events and that type of things too soon because there could be a second wave where more people start becoming infected again a couple of months after we reopen if we don't do it thoughtfully. So we will continue to pay attention to Contra Costa County and adapt city services to those changes.
Thank you very much to our city manager for that. I'm Michelle Mylum. I'm the co-host here, and I have the second question, which comes from Lana Marterella. "We see some cities around the world are enforcing shelter in place orders with fines. What are the city of Richmond's plans to enforce the shelter in place order, and how and when will that happen?" And this question is going to be directed to Chief French.
Good morning, everyone. So the police department is responding, as with many of the other Contra Costa law enforcement agencies, with an approach of educating the public coupled with enforcement. This has been ongoing since the inception of the order. Many residents have asked questions about the shelter in place order. Our code enforcement and regulatory units have been responding to complaints regarding businesses and educating them on the health order. We've gained compliance from all of the businesses we've contacted from simply educating them about the restrictions of the health order. Our patrol officers are responding to as many calls as they can regarding individuals violating the order. This is the more challenging part because every time an officer responds, they increase their risk of exposure. However, we are continuing to respond and educate, and when necessary, we will cite and have cited people for willful defiance of that order.
Thank you, Chief French. And there was a follow-up to this. It's very similar. We've tried to group questions that you had that are alike, and so the follow-up question comes from Romeo Serrano. And Romeo wants to know, "How can I know if my community is following the city of Richmond's rules regarding COVID-19? I know this is a big issue in the community where people just may not know. Can you answer that question, Chief?"
Sure. So Richmond actually doesn't necessarily have its own rules when it comes to COVID-19. The rules come from the county health order, which spells out what people can and cannot do during the shelter in place. You can find the health order on the Contra Costa County Health Department's website, or you could call the Health Department's hotline number for more information. Additionally, the city of Richmond's COVID-19 website is also helpful, has a lot of helpful information. If you don't find the answers that you're looking for there, our regulatory unit has been tasked with educating and enforcement, and you could contact them.
Thank you so much, Chief French. I have the next question, and it has to do with supporting the vulnerable. Latisha Carpenter asks, "What steps are being taken by the city of Richmond to support our most vulnerable populations, and how can other residents help this cause?" And I'm actually going to ask my co-moderator, Michelle Mylum, to take on this question. Michelle?
Thank you. And this is a really good question, and it's a question, for those of you who know me, that's near and dear to my heart because as we go into this COVID-19, people are a whole month and a half without a paycheck, and many people are dealing with issues of food security, having enough to eat, how do they take care of their family, how do they take care of their businesses? It's a very good question. So there's a couple of things that the city is doing, and I think one of the important things to remember is that we have to work better together. This is not something the city can do alone. A lot of what we're doing right now is partnering to leverage our resources with various agencies and nonprofits so that we can better serve the residents. But one thing we recognize early on is that, not just during COVID, but after COVID, we're going to need a serious relief effort for those who are in need. So one of the things that the city is doing is they're creating a rapid response fund, and that's with the city and other partners that will participate in it. It engages over 90 different stakeholders, including community nonprofits, the school district, and I'm sure faith communities, those who would like to be involved. So we can try to raise funds for those who need it most and be able to identify those who need those kinds of resources and share that. Right now, it's in the development phase because obviously we're early on into this crisis, but we are moving forward as quickly as we can to try to get that up and running. And the goal is to generate, hopefully, millions of dollars to be able to respond to the needs of folks in the Richmond community. But we can't do that alone. It's not something the city's going to be able to do alone. We really are going to have to partner with a lot of our community-based agencies and you all to share the message about that so that we have a central donation site for Richmond that will go to benefit all of the different groups that are doing work in Richmond. The other issue that's come up is food security. So, you know, one of the things, I don't know if people know, that the city actually has a program through the Community Services Division where seniors can get low-cost meals. As we know, a lot of seniors really shouldn't be out at the grocery stores and really should be trying to respect the shelter in place, but we've had senior meal pickups for quite some time, and we're continuing those. They're as low as $3 per meal, $21 for seven meals a week if people need extra assistance, so those kinds of services are available. In addition to, we really want to direct people towards the school district. The school district is providing lunches, and I believe that they actually are starting to provide supper several times a week as well to families in the school district that need meal pickup every day. There's two schools at Service Richmond where people can go and actually access those services, Kennedy and Richmond High, and they need volunteers. So if you're looking for something to do, I would reach out to the school district and see if that's something that you or your community group would like to partner on because it's very important. Transportation's also a huge issue, so I don't know if many of you know, but the city has an "our transit lift" program for seniors. So the seniors or the riders would pay the first $3, and then the city would pay the rest of the lift up until $17. The city would cover that amount. And so that is something that is also available to Richmond's residents to be able to access. And a lot of this information, again, is available on our website, which we'll showcase at the end of this talk, and so I really encourage people to go there and take a look at resources, or if you know someone who doesn't have internet access, because a lot of people don't. One of the ways that you can help is to gather that information for people who don't have the opportunity to access via internet and share that with them. Just, it's simple as looking it up online and calling them and providing them with some phone numbers, or contacting us so that we can help connect them. It's important we stay connected during this time. Some of the other things, big question that comes up all the time is how are we helping our homeless? So for those of you who don't know, I saw some homeless providers on the line. I see Kathleen Sullivan from GRIP is on the webinar today. Really, our homeless population is one of the most vulnerable populations regardless of whether we have pandemic or not, so being able to serve them during this time is really important. And so a lot of you have asked questions about, "Well, where is $100 million from the governor's office actually going?" A lot of folks thought that it was going to house all the homeless. Well, $100 million broken up amongst all the counties and all the major cities in California is not going to service all of our homeless, but what that first allocation of funding can do and will do for Contra Costa County is it will find those who are really medically in need, those who are most vulnerable to COVID, and be able to provide them with some housing vouchers. And they're identified through the county, so if people are interested in knowing how that process works, they can reach out to us, and we can provide that information in more detail, or you can go to the county's website. They have a division called Health Housing and Homeless Services, and you can go and you can find out what the criteria is. They're going to evaluate people to see if they meet the criteria to get the vouchers. There's been a lot of questions, and I've answered questions myself in the last few days. Well, where are the hotels located in Richmond? And so right now, I see Ms. Dandy is texting me right now, but I am going to say that, Ms. Dandy. So right now, the hotels in Richmond are the Marriott, and we also have the SureStay, Best Western. And so we have some of our service providers like GRIP that are providing some services for their clients there, BA or Rescue. And so that is something that is being done to identify those who are most vulnerable because what you don't want to have in congregate living situations is an outbreak of COVID, and you have those who are most vulnerable in the middle of that. So there's an effort to try to stem the tide. So the city works closely with the county on that because funding for homeless services comes through the county, and then we work within the cities to be able to provide those. The other thing that we're working on is trying to get some hand sanitation and portable potties out to some of the sites where people just don't have access to wash their hands, which leaves them very vulnerable to this virus. And so we've been working with the county to be trying to do those kinds of things as well. So those are just a few of the things that are going on, but we really need more. Even with all the things that I mentioned, more help is needed. So the best way to get involved is to stay engaged. If you go and you visit our website, there is a button there that talks about, "How can I help?" I would encourage you all to go there or reach out to city staff, reach out to us so that we can help leverage resources and coordinate with all the different groups that are doing good work on the ground. So it's not something that the city can do alone. Again, we're better together, and I think that that is the way that we move forward in trying to support our most vulnerable. And with that, that was like a Chuck Woolery quick change. I'm going back to my role of moderator, and my role of moderator, I have another question. And this question is about financial assistance, and it actually is going to be directed at Mayor Butt, and so I'm going to read the question aloud. So it comes from Carla Del Capio. "I have a house for rent. The city of Richmond said not to pay rent for at least three months. And I have called Bank of America because I pay a monthly loan fee. They are capitalizing on the dues. Therefore, am I going to pay more interest than before after the three months? How is the city going to help those who own rental properties?" And so I'm going to direct that question towards our mayor.
Well, first of all, the city of Richmond's action included no evictions for residential tenants during the period of local emergency, and we don't know how long that's going to last. The Judicial Council of California also has a rule on that that's 90 days. But the city of Richmond also provides a six-month grace period to pay rent with no late fees allowed, but eventually rent will be due. For owners of rental property, the following protections are enforced. In California, Wells Fargo, US Bank, Citibank, and JP Morgan Chase are providing, quote, "forbearance on foreclosures and on mortgage payments," unquote. Bank of America is, quote, "pausing all foreclosures, evictions, and repossessions," unquote, at this time. A new federal law, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security, CARES Act, puts in place two protections for homeowners with federally-backed mortgages. A foreclosure moratorium, and second of all, a right to forbearance for homeowners who are experiencing a financial hardship due to the COVID-19 emergency. If you do not have a federally-backed mortgage, you still may have relief options through your mortgage servicer or from your state. As I said before, the Judicial Council of California has banned commercial evictions as well as residential evictions for 90 days after the emergency ends. The following advice pertains to mortgage creditors. If you can pay your mortgage, pay it. Don't call your mortgage servicer if you aren't facing an immediate issue. Mortgage servicers are getting a lot of calls and need to first help those who won't be able to pay their mortgage. Check their websites first for possible options. If you cannot pay your mortgage or can only pay a portion, then contact your mortgage servicer immediately. It may take a while to get a loan servicer on the phone. Loan services are experiencing a high volume of calls and may also be impacted by the pandemic.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Butt, for that answer, and thank you, Michelle, for posing that question. Our next question pertains to health, and I'm going to direct this to Fire Chief Shepherd. This question comes from Leila Miller, who asks or says, "Please provide information on how the city of Richmond is doing in terms of numbers of cases, deaths, beds, equipment, and anything else the city of Richmond thinks is important."
Sure. Well, good morning, and thank you, Leila. Thank you, Christopher, for that question. As far as numbers, as of April 16, Contra Costa County Health Services reports that there have been over 8,000 people tested for COVID-19. Of those, 631 cases were confirmed. Of those 631, 37 required hospitalization, and unfortunately, there have been 16 deaths. Now, as far as these numbers relate to the city of Richmond, I can confirm that there have been 66 cases here in the city of Richmond. Now, as far as equipping ourselves, I can tell you that all emergency responders in the city have been provided personal protective equipment to respond to COVID-19. And what we feel is important, and this is the critical part. First, we feel it's important that you understand that this is a partnership, that each of us has a responsibility in defeating this pandemic. So wash your hands, exercise social distancing, adhere to the shelter in place, and this will all go a long way in helping. Now, city elected officials, city administrators are following the guidance of CDC and Contra Costa County Health. We've staffed, as the city manager alluded to, we staffed our Emergency Operations Center to better enable ourselves to gain a real-time understanding of what's going on, not only throughout the county, but throughout the nation as it relates to COVID-19. All of the departments are working under a unified command, under the direction of the city manager, to make sure that we have a strong response to COVID-19. We also feel it's important to communicate early and often to you, the public. Additionally, we feel it's important that we hear from you. Let us know what your concerns are. Again, this is a partnership. We're in it together, and I know we can defeat it. Hopefully, I've answered your question.
Thank you, Chief, and we actually have a follow-up question on health that I will pose to you as well. Of course, many Richmond residents saw in the news and on Facebook that the Crane Way Pavilion was being converted into a temporary medical center for COVID-19 patients. This question- This question comes from Ada San Diego, who says, please provide information on the conversion of the Crane Way Pavilion into the medical center for COVID-19 patients. Chief, any information there?
Sure. What I can tell you is that the Crane Way has been converted into a 250-bed alternate care site, or an ACS, as we call it. The ACS has been established to handle an increased number of COVID-19 patients seeking medical aid. Now, just to be clear, when we open up the ACS, that doesn't mean that we're going to start staffing or putting patients into that facility. The only time that we're going to actually use the alternate care site is when all the other medical beds throughout the county are actually being utilized for COVID-19 patients. So currently, there are no patients in the Crane Way ACS. I think a second part of that question was how can we make sure that we don't spread the COVID-19 by having this facility here? There are very strict guidelines by the CDC as far as setting up an ACS. That means spacing of beds. It means storage of clean and contaminated materials. It also means making sure to adhere to proper cleaning as far as floors, surfaces, making sure that furniture is not porous, making sure that trash is being appropriately removed. Additionally, environmental services are being brought in. These are professional cleaning services to make sure that any contaminations are cleaned, contained, and don't venture outside of the building. Additionally, people will be prevented from either visiting or leaving the facility until they are well and no pets are allowed. So hopefully that answers some of your questions as far as the ACS.
Thank you so much, Chief. I'm happy to present the next question, which is about volunteerism. And it's kind of a follow-up to what we talked about earlier about so many different organizations, whether they're homeless organizations, hospitals, other groups need help. So this question comes from Dave Clark and it says, in what ways can churches serve the residents of the city of Richmond? Are there any way that we as faith communities can partner or collaborate? And so I'm going to direct this question. It's a two-part question. The first part I'll direct to Chief French and then I'll follow up.
Okay. So churches are such a vital part of our community and there are many things that churches can do to help us during this challenging time. First and foremost, we ask that they abide by the health order and not hold in-person church services. Some churches have had a hard time with this and I get it, but the health order specifically prohibits gatherings. Now that's, now this doesn't mean that churches cannot continue to help our community. Churches can continue to worship through online streaming services. They can offer their facilities if needed for gatherings of donated supplies. And they can also help spread the message that social distancing is vital to saving the lives of their community. Additionally, I saw on the chat that Kathleen Sullivan has said that she is in need of help at the GRIP facility for food services. So contact GRIP and help them out with their services for the homeless.
Thank you, Chief. And there's a follow-up question. This follow-up question comes from BK Williams. What is the best way to volunteer? Is the city of Richmond willing to use public library staff as a resource to help businesses or individuals provide, apply for funding? And what have been the precise actions that the city of Richmond has taken? And again, I think this was a compound question, BK. Why is this town hall so long in coming? I think I can follow up on that at the end, but maybe I can refer this over to Genevieve Pastor Cohen, our emergency services manager. Genevieve, do we have you? Okay, since we don't have Genevieve, seems like we have a little.
Oh, I'm here.
Okay.
I'm here. Sorry. Thank you so much, Michelle, for that question and thank you, BK, as well. And I'm really glad too that Christopher will be demonstrating the website later on because the best way to find ways to volunteer is to visit the city's coronavirus website and by clicking on the icon Help Now. And under that icon, it shows ways to help. Some of those ways are by registering on Nextdoor to on the help map so that you can help within your neighborhoods. Another way of helping is to donate food to a shelter or even a food bank. And also too, the Red Cross is always needing blood, so donate blood there. And also, you could also help deliver meals with Meals on Wheels and to stay engaged. Also, under that same page, under Help Now, you'll see something that's labeled Volunteer Needed. And there are many, many organizations that are looking for volunteers right now to help out. Michelle had mentioned a few earlier when she spoke, the school district and the shelters. And also to, to talk about looking at the, the park, the library, the question about the library, using their resources. Right now, there's a shelter in place and libraries are currently closed. However, once opportunities do come up and are available, we can certainly consider how we could implement such a program. On that, I'd like to turn it over to Michelle for the last part of that question.
Thank you so much, Genevieve. And I think that's a great question, BK, that you posed and we're still trying to figure that out. So I think in the question of what takes it so long for something like this to come together, I think for the first week or so, couple of weeks, most jurisdictions are just kind of working to try to put all their emergency procedures in place because there's so many things, as you can see, that have to be put in place to try to keep essential services running for the city. But we really want to try to get this out as soon as we possibly can. Most of your questions have been taken up so far in city council and so that's kind of been the repository for some of the questions that are coming out now. Other departments are having individual online forums. But we really wanted to try to do a forum such as this and we can always do more where you have a chance to get your questions heard. And on that note, I know there are a lot of questions in the chat. I wanted to take a break just to kind of explain that a little bit. The Q and A, I should say, I shouldn't say the chat. You all have posted a lot of questions. I see 25 here. We have some members of our COVID PIO team that are trying to respond to links and information requests. Again, we're going to try to answer as many questions as we can and a lot of you pre-submitted your questions. So if we're able to get to some of those questions in the chat, we definitely will try to do that. But please just be aware that this is a first of maybe additional forums that we'll be able to have in this format, in this new normal, so that we can get more of your questions answered. And hopefully you'll be able to also connect with staff so that we can communicate offline where the work really gets done. But that's a great question, BK. And I think that we were trying to get it connected as soon as possible and we hope to continue moving forward having more of these, so.
Michelle, can I ask a quick question of you?
Yes.
So with the library closures right now, can you just talk about some of the online services we have? Maybe checking out a book electronically or some of the other services that, you know, because we do have a shelter in place that, you know, the libraries nowadays are so dynamic, there are so many other services. Can you expand on that for us or for viewers?
Yeah, I think you explained that really well, Chief. I, I think that using, if you can, if you have a library card and you have access to electronic services, it's a great resource for people to be able to connect. I know that there's a lot of parents, you know, struggling with, you know, how they can help their children while they're being homeschooled right now and working to make sure that nobody falls academically behind. I know that's a big area of concern for education community, like what happens when children go back to school, making sure that they have the resource they need. So being able to have a library card and use the electronic services is a great way to be able to connect. And then there was a follow-up to that is could we potentially have, you know, other services that could be answered by library staff? I know that's something, Chief, that your unit and others are working on, seeing if we could have a resource person for folks who may not have access to the internet so you'd be able to call and get questions answered. It's something that I know we've been considering and so obviously we definitely appreciate the feedback from the public about that. And this is a process where we're going to continue to evolve as we go. So your feedback to us is very important because it really is your city and we want to be able to help incorporate as much feedback as we can.
Great. Thank you, everyone, for those questions and for those answers. Next question comes from Shannon McLelland and I'm going to direct this question to the city manager and to Michelle if there's any additional information to provide. Shannon says, please provide information on how to follow up on the Small Business Administration loans, specifically the $10,000 Paycheck Protection Loans and Unemployment Insurance. What is the city of Richmond doing to help small businesses going through economic hardships? And are there any programs that will be funded?
Sure. Well, thank you. I want to focus on the local response because it is true that the majority of the resources are going to be delivered through federal and state resources and there isn't going to be enough funding. We've already heard that some of those programs have closed down at that level. But here in Richmond, we do have two suggestions for you. There is a revolving loan fund for small businesses. And due to COVID-19, we've actually been able to do two things with that. We've reduced the loan interest rate from 5.5% to 4%. We've also modified the approval process to expedite the loan approvals. So you can find information about that revolving loan fund on our website. And the second thing is, is that KIVA Richmond, KIVA is spelled K-I-V-A. It's a small micro loan for businesses up to $3,000 and it's crowdfunding. So you can use that KIVA platform to try and raise about 50% or up to $1,500 of your loan request. The city of Richmond will then match any amount raised up to $1,500. That information is also available on our website. We're also going to continue looking to the future about what additional resources we can provide, potentially through the Rapid Response Fund, potentially through just helping provide that individual assistance to businesses to, to, to help point them towards those state and federal resources. For small businesses, another great resource are score counselors. These are free services to help with business plans, marketing plans, that type of thing. And it's probably already time to start thinking about how to reinvigorate and reopen those businesses and working with some of those free counselors for your small business.
Thank you so much, city manager. And it looks like, Mr. Mayor, you have information regarding the PPP loans. Is that something that you'd like to briefly go over on the call? Mr. Mayor, I think your microphone is off.
Thank you. I have some good news and that is that the payroll protection PPP loans have been made in Richmond with participation of local banks like Mechanics Bank. The bad news is that according to SBA, the Small Business Administration's $349 billion Paycheck Protection Program has run out of money. A loan program which offers forgivable loans to small businesses as long as most of the money goes to payroll costs was first authorized as part of the 2.2 trillion CARES Act passed by Congress and signed into law by the president on March 27. Politicians, experts, and bankers have been warning that the program will run out of money by the end of this week or sooner without additional funding. Congress has been locked in a stalemate over a possible $250 billion extension. We'll continue to stay abreast of this and provide this information to our local businesses as the information becomes available. One piece of good news today, and that is that unemployment insurance payments for independent contractors will be available in two weeks. So that will allow a lot of small businesses and, and people who are not on a regular payroll to collect unemployment insurance.
Thank you, Mayor Butt, for that answer. Appreciate that. That's a question a lot of people have asked and certainly something we need to continue to work on over the coming days and weeks. So I have the next question and the next question responds to some safety issues. And this question will be directed to Chief French and it's anonymous. We live near Planet Fitness on McDonald and San Pablo Avenues. Since it closed due to COVID-19, it's become a preferred spot for homeless people living in their vehicles. The number is slowly growing with around 12 to 15 vehicles and spreading throughout the evening on Key Boulevard. And this question is also just, you know, concerns that they have about crime and safety in the area. So I will develop, I will direct the first part of this question to Chief French.
Thank you, Michelle. So the shelter in place kind of limits the amount of enforcement that we can provide on homeless encampment abatements. So health officials have also indicated that dispersing the encampments may be more hazardous if there are people there who have the virus, are, people that are there that have the virus and they're being exposed to others. So they're asking us not to abate homeless encampments at this time. However, there, if there's a safety issue occurring, you could call our dispatch number as well as code enforcement and we can respond and assess what's feasible for us to do during this time. In regards to the unhoused population and the homeless, as Michelle mentioned before, the Contra Costa County Health Services are providing housing vouchers to the homeless, but due to the high demand and limited funds, the focus will be on those who are most vulnerable. So they are being placed, the most vulnerable are being placed in hotels around the city, which was discussed earlier.
Thank you, Chief. And there's a follow-up to that particular question. And this one comes from Norma Wallace. Will the Richmond Police Department still ticket cars blocking the sidewalk?
So we haven't been doing a lot of parking enforcement because there's way more vehicles that are attached to residences than there is street parking. So we kind of suspended our parking enforcement around neighborhoods and commercial areas during this time. However, if there's a safety issue like a car blocking a sidewalk, we still will be issuing citations for those types of violations. There was, while we're talking about safety, I did see a couple of questions in the chat or the question and answer about pathways and walkways and people not social distancing. I know that our Parks and Recreation have been doing a good job of putting out signs and we're also sending out our traffic unit on dirt bikes and motorbikes to remind people of the social distancing requirements. So I just wanted to put that out there while we're talking about safety issues.
Thank you, Chief. And we have another question under safety and this is going to be a dual question. The first part is going to be directed to the chief and it comes from Gail McGlaughlin. Do the Richmond Fire and Police Departments have all the personal protection equipment that they need for staff? How can residents facilitate your work? Where are residents with severe respiratory symptoms being taken for care and what testing is being offered to residents? So I think the first part of that question, we can direct to our police and fire chiefs and then we can have Genevieve from OES follow up with the information about testing.
Sure. So I'll take the first part as far as our responders. It's been a challenge as far as getting PPE for our responders. We want to lean forward and make sure that we get enough supplies in to last us for the expected duration of COVID-19. As of today, yes, our people do have the appropriate PPE. But again, we want to make more than certain that we have a supply that's going to last the duration, so we continue to make requests through the county. We're getting them. However, there's also, as you indicated early on, the donation site. That's been helpful. We hope that we'll get some of those supplies into our department to help our responders as we go out. As you know, Richmond is a city of high incidents. There's a lot of calls. My responders are out there every single day. They're responding in full PPE. So they're going through this quite rapidly and so it has been a challenge, but we can continue to meet that challenge, at least on the fireside. I'll let the police chief answer for police.
So yes, just like the fire chief said, it has been a challenge to get appropriate PPE gear as, but as of right now, we have enough gear for our officers. I have somebody dedicated daily to look at the purchase and making sure that we're constantly reevaluating what we need and ordering constantly. And the ordering isn't the problem. It's the, having the vendors be able to provide the equipment. That's the issue. But as of today and probably for the next few weeks, we're good.
Thank you. And the last part of that question would be directed to Genevieve to talk a little bit about testing.
Yes. Thank you, Michelle. With regards to testing, the county provides. With regards to testing, the county provides that. And so they're the agency that is engaged in that. So we do, we do collaborate with the Contra Costa County Health Services as part of our EOC on a regular basis. However, the tracing function would have to be identified through the county if a process is to take place. Back to you.
All right. Thank you very much. I've got the next question, and the next topic has to do with impact to business. This is a question that I know the mayor's office has received a number of times, so I'm going to direct this to the city manager. This question comes from Stephen Blodgett, and Stephen says, while City Hall is closed due to COVID-19, how can I pay for a business license for business I'm starting?
Great. Well, we have a couple of different options, including one through our website. And you can either apply for a new business license or renew your current one online. We have a software system we refer to as eTrackit, and you can fill out an application on the left-hand side. You scroll down, it says, apply for a new license, and create an account. You can also renew that way. And if working online is not an option, you can still fill out the form and return the information via email or mail.
Thank you very much, city manager. The next set of questions pertain to impact to city services. Mayor Butt, I'm going to address these questions, or at least this first question to you. It's from Carol Hegstrom, and Carol says, of course, reading is an important activity for both adults and children during the shelter-in-place order, and Carol has seen other libraries in the state open. Carol says that there have been systems in which patrons can order books online and pick them up outside of libraries, similar to how we're seeing restaurants operating with takeout orders. Carol wants to know, would it be possible to open the City of Richmond's libraries for curbside pickup? And if necessary, would you, Mayor Tom Butt, be willing to petition Health Services to get permission to do this? Mr. Mayor?
Well, that's a great question and a great suggestion, and we are looking into it. As you heard already, libraries have been closed as a part of the health order, and they, they haven't given specific information about what kind of alternate arrangements can be made. But I want to emphasize something that a couple of panelists have already addressed, and that is that there are substantial online resources at the library. And you can check the library website to see which ones are available, and I hope that, hope that people will, will take a look at them and use them.
Great. Thank you for that response. I have a follow-up question, and this is going to be directed to Genevieve Pastor Cohen. This question comes from Ms. Loeys, who asks, when, when will we be able to go to parks? And can the track be opened at Contra Costa College so we can walk alone and feel safe?
Thank you, Chris, for the question, and thank you, Ms. Loeys. When it comes to the parks, because we're in a shelter-in-place, we're restricted in terms of using playgrounds and the parking areas, just to encourage people to socially distance when outdoors. So we would be taking the direction of the state and the county for that. When it comes to Contra Costa College, they're their own jurisdiction too, and they too follow the direction from the county and the state. So therefore, they're closed right now as well.
Thank you so much, Genevieve. We really appreciate that response. I have another question. My question involves impact to city services again. The question is from Jan Minoni from the North and East Neighborhood Council, and she writes, the North and East Neighborhood Council has hosted a picnic since the 90s. I've been to many of them. We usually have it the second week of September. This year, it would be September 12th. We do have some fundraising and organization needs, and she says that we need to do that. Does the City of Richmond think that it will be possible to have a large event with 700 to 1,000 people in September? And I'm going to direct that to you again.
Thank you, Michelle. Neighborhoods and community events are a big part of how Richmond connects. And unfortunately, at this time, that's a question that we can't answer right now without the direction from the state or the county. So it really depends upon how well COVID-19 is going to be contained. When the time comes to lift the order in phases, that's what we're hearing, we'll be facing a new normal, meaning that we'll be required to wear masks and continue with social distancing and frequently washing our hands. So until then, we're, we're dependent upon what the county and the state say.
Thank you so much, Genevieve. And I think it's also important to note that a lot of our city festivals have been postponed, like Cinco de Mayo on Juneteenth. And I know that this is a busy time typically in Richmond where everyone is having some kind of a community event or gathering. So I think that if we just kind of hold tight, we're just going to wait for that feedback from the county and the state officials about when and how we can reopen that planning process, and we want to stay in touch with all the groups who are organizing so that they can do that safely. So at this point in time, I know that there are a ton of questions, and hopefully, we answer some of your questions that were in the chat box. We have people who are on our PIO team that are trying to answer some of those if they can of you in the chat box, even though it's not online, in the Q and A area. But we wanted to take a moment as we come to a close to talk a little bit about resources. There's one final question here, and Chris and I are going to answer this one together. But I think it's an important one because it's what we've been talking about this past hour, is how do we deal with resources? I know the question came up in the chat, how are we dealing with issues of food insecurity? Where can I go to find out to help donate to organizations that help support people to be able to have the basic function of having enough to eat? And we know that there are many in immigrant communities, undocumented, you know, those who are unhoused, who need those services desperately, as well as families who have just lost their jobs, and they're trying to make it from paycheck to paycheck while they wait for unemployment to kick in. So these are all important things. I think I should clarify is that if you didn't get your question answered, or you're like, hey, I have a resource and the city, you know, didn't, you know, contact me about it, please contact us. We want to include everything that you have to provide on our website and be able to share it widely. It only works if we have the partnership with you. So feel free to reach out, and we will email everyone with some of the updates so that you can have that information. So going into this last question, it's from anonymous. It says, please provide information on local food banks, homeless shelters, and women's shelters that we can donate to. So while I'm doing that, Chris is going to pull up the slide for the website. But one thing that you can do immediately right now is donate to the food bank, because the food bank is donating to everyone: small churches, houses of worship, nonprofits, homeless shelters. A lot of people get assistance from the food bank. In fact, when we have our information that came out about the Lyft rides for seniors, one of the things that we're trying to do to address food insecurity is make sure that those who may live alone and don't have family that can take them to the grocery store or anyone who can bring them can get those low-cost rides and go to the food bank where they can get free groceries. So please, donate to the food bank. They desperately need it if you need something to do. Also, our homeless shelters like Crip, you know, they need hand sanitizer, they need donations. Contact them first to kind of get an assessment of what they need, because sometimes people donate things, and they might not necessarily be what is needed. So I would encourage, before you donate anything, reach out to the organization just to get an assessment of what is needed, and then work with your local group that's going to be helping to follow up on that. And then finally, you know, in these times, we've seen a rise in domestic violence kind of around the nation as people are sheltered in place and those who are in situations where they are abused, they need assistance. Here in West Contra Costa County in Richmond, we have a Family Justice Center. The Family Justice Center is still open. They still are working with clients and people who are in need of help. If they need help, I would encourage you all to reach out to them and find out what their needs are, and they can advise you on how you can assist. And all of this information is available on our website. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Chris to kind of navigate the last part of this.
Thank you. And so on your screen, if you're participating with us on a laptop or smartphone or any other device with a, with a screen to see this, I am currently sharing the City of Richmond's homepage. Our website is ci.richmond.ca.us. If you don't remember that, you can Google City of Richmond, California, and our website should pop up in the search results. And what I'm going to show you are two ways to get to what is basically the City of Richmond's virtual one-stop shop for coronavirus information. On my website screen here, my computer screen, you should see there's a coronavirus infobar at the very top of the screen. There is red text here that says, read on. And also down here is a microphone that I just clicked on that also says coronavirus information. So I clicked on that microphone icon, and I was directed to the Richmond Novel Coronavirus Information Page. And again, this is the City of Richmond's virtual one-stop shop for so much of the information that Richmond residents are seeking at this time. There are recent updates here, and this website is updated regularly. We have tabs here for shelter-in-place information, impact to city services and facilities, health information and community resources, and like many of you have asked, how can you help? We have a Help Now tab here. Of course, we also have state resources regarding COVID-19 that you can refer to and be directed to, and several other sources of information here. Of course, as Michelle mentioned, and as I mentioned at the top of the call, we unfortunately cannot get to all the questions today, but we do have a Frequently Asked Questions tab here where you can possibly get some of the answers to questions that you have. And, you know, also here at the bottom of the screen, we have links for Contra Costa Health Resources and several other helpful links for you. We know that your desire for information and your questions don't end here with this call today, and neither does our desire to keep you informed. So please do visit our website, visit our coronavirus information page, and if you cannot find an answer to your question here, if you can't find a resource that you're looking for here, please do give us a call, one of our many offices, and we'd be happy to assist you.
Thank you, Chris. And I just would like to, at this point in time, thank everyone who participated, everyone who is on the call, whether your question was read aloud or not. All these questions are important. We're going to continue in this dialogue to keep on answering them in many different ways. This is just one of them. If you like this format, give us some feedback. You know, if there's something that you think that we should add for next time, please let us know. This is a work in progress, and so we're all still learning and navigating here. I want to thank our panelists for being here today, all of our city officials and our mayor for being here today and answering some of the questions that are at hand. And then there are a lot of people in the background who worked really, really hard to make this happen on a short period of time. I think it was a week and a half turnaround on trying to put this together, and that is folks on our PIO team, our KCRT staff, our IT staff, everyone who worked to contribute information to share with the public. So we just really appreciate you taking your time out to learn more about the impact of COVID-19 on the City of Richmond. And I do agree with the mayor and the spirit of Rosie the Riveter. I know that Richmond can do it, but we can't do it without each other. So thank you so much for being a part of this. We hope to have a recording of this that can be shared. We're working with KCRT to get that, so that if you weren't able to participate, or you know somebody said, I wasn't able to participate, or I wasn't able to get onto the call, we'll have it replayed so that you can gather that information and share that with people who may not have had an opportunity to participate today. And with that, please take care of yourself, stay safe, and thank you.